Bell Tower tells me it's five o'clock. I'd like to call the planning board meeting of October 3rd, 2024 to order. Persons who wish to do so are invited to attend in person or view the meeting on Gloucester's website, and joined by phone as well. You know, there are instructions there from guidance on to join the meeting remotely. Please note that in-person meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technology problems interrupt the remote connection. So we've called the meeting to order. I'd like to introduce board members and staff. To my far right is Hank McCarroll, Beverly Bookin, so I'm Rick Noonan, the chair. To my immediate left is Eric Heinlander, who is our senior planner, senior planner still, or no?
That's planner.
Staff, okay, just working on that. And, you know, every, every day. And then to my far left, Doug Cook. Sean Henry is joining us remotely, as is our planning director, Craig Catamatory. Let's get up to the agenda here. So first order of business under A and R, site plan reviews and preliminary subdivision plans. Number one is an approval not required plan submitted by Melissa and Christopher Sala to divide property at 108R and 112R Eastern Ave, assessors map 263, 264, lots 28 and 2. Mr. Judd, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, John Judd, engineer with Gateway Consultants, representing Missy Sala, who is the owner of this property, these two properties, I should say, at 108 rear and 112 rear Eastern Ave. This is essentially just a consolidation of two parcels, as shown. Thank you, Eric, for bringing that up. Two parcels, as shown, is map 264, parcel two, which is 2.8 acres, and then parcel 263, map 263, rather, parcel 28, which is 4.9 acres, and basically consolidating both lots into one, as shown on the plan. This could have been done with just a deed consolidation, but the attorneys preferred that we do it on a clean.
Okay. So any more background, Eric, on this?
Again, like the applicant said, it's a pretty straightforward lot line to be removed, which is this parcel here, or this line here. It has a required frontage for the district. Up here is the general industrial zone, but there's no frontage there, so. Yeah, that's what we're looking at, man.
Any further questions on the application? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
Don't move.
We have a motion, and I need a second, please. Thank you, Doug. So we have a motion by Beverly Bookin, second by Doug Cook. I need a roll call vote, please.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member Bookin?
Yes.
I'll vote for Hank, and we'll abstain.
Okay, yep. And member McCarroll?
Okay. Yes. So just for the record, Hank, to say that you abstain on the vote. Okay, we'll take that as an extension. Thank you. Thanks, John. Next up, under this section of the agenda is an approval not required plan submitted by S and N Realty Trust to divide property at 2 and 4 Old Country Road and 16 Old Country Road, assessors map 264, lot 43 and 21.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, John Judd, engineer with Gateway Consultants, representing the applicants for this parcel transfer proposal.
Not working. Going to wait for a second to change the microphone. Okay. Thank you.
So once again, looking to carve out an unbuildable parcel, what is shown is A, that's the triangular lot in the darker line to the, exactly. Thank you, Eric, he's showing that on the, on the screen. This is a 3,569 square foot parcel that would be, is proposed to be transferred over to the upper lot, which is shown as map 264, lot 21. So basically carving out a parcel to transfer over to the upper lot. And that's, that's essentially it. Both lots will continue to meet zoning requirements.
Eric, any background on this one? Seems pretty straightforward as well.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. This is the unbuildable part. So right now, this is the current lot line. This is the proposed one that will take in some of this unbuildable land.
Okay. Any other questions by board members? I'll accept the motion to move the A and R on Country, Old Country Road.
Don't move.
Have a motion and a second, please. We have a motion by Beverly Bookin, seconded by Doug Cook. Need a roll call vote, please.
As Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member McCarroll, I'll need your microphone closer to you.
Yes. Okay, thanks very much. Moving on to the third A and R stacked full on today. Approval not required plan submitted by Shore Shack Realty Trust to divide property at 280 Atlantic Road, assessors map 134, lots 27 and 87.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last one for me tonight. On behalf of the applicant, John Judd, engineer with Gateway Consultants, this is, these are two separate lots, pre-existing. What the applicant would like to do is realign the existing lot line as shown with the dash line there. So basically, very similar to the last project, two unbuildable parcels is basically realigning a lot line that preexists now. So that's for future planning. And they're going to be removing a, an existing attached garage. You can sort of see it there on that. It says to be raised. It's, yeah, right there, Eric. And, yep.
Dash mark.
Exactly, yeah. That, that goes away, and they're proposing something in the future to be an attach a little bit closer to the main portion of the house. So again, both lots will meet zoning requirements.
Perfect. Any other questions by board members? Hearing none. Eric, straightforward again.
Pretty much.
I'll accept the motion to move the A and R for 280 Atlantic Road. We have a motion. So we have a motion by Doug Cook, seconded by Hank McCarroll. We need a roll call vote, please.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member McCarroll?
Yes.
All right, thanks, John. Okay, next on the agenda this evening is a site plan review application submitted by SS Sala Real Estate Investments, LLC, represented by Seaside Legal Solutions, PC, for an addition of a single, of a single family structure on merged lots to be located at 12 and 18 Plum Street, assessors map 564, lots 33 and 34.
Good evening. If you want a moment to actually get into this meeting, I'm sorry, I didn't have it loaded. So for the record, I can do this while I load up. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. In this first, we are speaking to 12-18 Plum. I've raised my hand to be let into as a presenter, or whatever you need me to do, so I can share my screen if you see me. Appreciate that, thank you. Okay. All right, we're in good shape now. So as the chair indicated, the idea behind this is they're simply looking to add a second residential structure to the locus. It's going to require an additional curb cut where there is already curb cuts on the property. And so we are in the R10, which is the medium-high density residential district. The property currently has, it's comprised of two undersized lots. They're still considered separate lots in the assessors database. For zoning purposes, they're considered merged because neither were quite 10,000 square feet. 12 Plum Street has the existing two-family and a garage with a driveway. 18 Plum Street just has a garage with a driveway. And this project would add a building basically in between with its own driveway. So across all the property, it would be the third driveway for the property, the second one on lot number 18 Plum. So we had to request a few waivers. Again, site plan review, as you know, is more typically found in more complex redevelopment or development projects. Not often does a single-family house trigger site plan review. So obviously, we wanted to, you know, get a waiver from stuff like the lighting plan, the landscaping plan. And that's all been requested in the application. If you have any specific questions, we can go through that. Again, for the site plan and topography, we just did a composite site plan. Just tried to be, you know, a little more pragmatic with the filing than going through, you know, $20,000 with a plan development for a single-family house driveway. We did, however, bring a drainage plan. We know that's a very important thing to this board, very important to the neighborhood. So we did make sure the drainage plan was in place. And so this is the site plan itself. You can see on the left-hand side is the existing two-family. To the right of that is the existing garage that services the two-family. To the right of that, in the darker line, the square, is the footprint for the proposed house. And then on the far right of the property is the existing garage that's on 18 Plum. This is the architectural plans, which again are required. If you have any questions, we can certainly talk about the house. It's a two-and-a-half-story, single-family house. Here's the FEMA flood map. We are way up the hill, so we're not worried about flooding in this situation. Here's the GIS data and the satellite photography. Again, you can see from this, the two-family, the existing garage, the blank space where the house would go, and the, you can almost see the garage on the right-hand side. I think this is an important slide to kind of look at, in that it shows you first how densely developed the area is. We're not trying to do anything that's out of place for the neighborhood. And secondly, if you look, it's hard to see, which is zooming in on it, but there's a house across the street that's lot 50, 6450 is the number on top of it. And that's basically where the driveway is going to line up with. And so this driveway has been designed, there's, if you go out to Plum Street, there's almost like in every other, like, left-hand driveway, right-hand driveway, and they kind of, you know, trade off so that two driveways aren't backing out into each other. And this follows that pattern. This is a street shot. Again, this is where the driveway would be going. You can see in the left part of this picture the two-family and the garage over there. And the back right corner of this photo, you can see the existing garage on 18. And so you have some review guidelines. You have to make sure we're making reasonable efforts to conserve and protect natural features. It's an already developed lot. We're in the high-medium density residential district, but we are only building a modest single-family. There'll still be a lot of open space there. We're also trying to save as many trees as we can save getting in there with the house and the driveway. Erosion controls on slopes greater than 10%. We don't have any slopes greater than 10%, but we have provided a drainage plan and a driveway plan showing you how it's going to be set up. And then making sure that, again, we're placing building structures, et cetera, in a way that doesn't interfere. That's what I was talking about, that kind of zipper pattern of the driveways up and down the street to make sure that someone backing out of this proposed driveway isn't backing into someone else's driveway or into a car backing out of that other driveway across the street. And then there's some requirements, making sure that you use the right kind of pavement. We're going to comply with that. The parking complies with the zoning ordinance. Utilities are already on-site, so they'll be run. We don't need to run them underground from the street. They're already on the site. And then again, there is drainage on-site. I don't know what's happened to this projector. It's usually much better fidelity, right? This is, I hope you guys have screens in front of you. I'm sorry for those who don't. You do also have these plans in your packet. And then we're not in the MI district, that doesn't apply. And then again, making sure that we're maximizing pedestrian vehicular safety. This is a modern driveway that will provide room for cars to safely enter and exit. This last one just kind of shows you in blue the three driveways in total. The bit larger one on the left belongs to the two-family and goes to that wide garage. The one in the center is the new one being proposed, and the one on the right is the existing garage driveway. And you may be asking yourself, well, you know, you've got a driveway over on 18 and a garage. Why are you putting a third one? Historically, that driveway and that garage belonged to the house on the property to the right. And there's been some conversation with the neighbor who is looking to acquire some off-street parking for themselves. And so it's likely that they're going to regain use of that driveway that historically belonged to their house as part of this. So we couldn't use it for this project itself. Again, you know, a lot of guidelines here, but again, we're complying with the zoning ordinance. We've been to the ZBA for anything that we didn't comply with initially. We are, you know, having reasonable internal circulation. It's going to be pulling in, pulling out. It's a residential driveway for a single family. We're outside the FEMA flood plain. I think that's all the conditions we have to meet. So I'll end it there for now. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I think we've met the standard for site plan approval, and we request a vote along those lines.
Okay, thank you, Joel. Eric?
Yeah, again, the one thing, with the ZBA approval, you guys did see, it is under appeal right now?
Yeah, there was a, there was an appeal filed. It's my belief it'll be settled probably within the next few days. There's just, there's a very strict 20-day deadline to appeal, and there's no way to, like, toll it while in conversation. So for the sake of preserving their rights, the appeal was filed, but I do not believe the appeal was related to this driveway.
So again, it's a site plan review, the main, what you guys, what is really under review here is the addition of some, of curb cuts. The city departments have reviewed it. There was one stipulation from the director of the Department of Public Works, just that the driveways be constructed as designed, confirmed by a submission of an ASBIL plan, and shall not be altered or modified without approval of the planning board. So that may be a condition that we will consider. Do you need that closed?
It'll go down soon enough.
Shining right on you.
I feel like that scene in Raiders of the Lost Ark, where he's like putting the staff in and.
Yeah. Greg had his hand raised.
Yeah, I was just going to add, this is the first time the planning board has seen a site plan review that was under this threshold. And in the development of the site plan review ordinance, I think it was probably more contemplating smaller multifamily projects that might have more than one access point. Joel, he likes to, he likes to break that, that glass ceiling and be the first one to apply. So I think this is a fairly unique application, fairly minimal. And again, all the departments have reviewed it. And it does have to still follow the drainage grading ordinance, and with that condition, Public Works was satisfied. So I don't see any other issues.
Thank you, Greg. Any comments from board members?
So if we vote to approve, but it has an outstanding appeal to the ZBA, it's with the proviso that that has to be resolved, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, okay, so we understand that. Thank you.
They will not be able to obtain a building permit from Mr. Vicari until that appeal is resolved.
Okay, any comments? So I will accept the motion to move forward the site plan review application for 12 and 18 Plum Street.
So move with the condition applied, requested by the city?
Yes. We have a motion with an amendment. I need a second, please, Mr. Cook. So we have a motion by Beverly Bookin, seconded by Doug Cook. Need a roll call vote, please.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member McCarroll?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can lower the shade. The sun hasn't gone down that far.
I can stand to the right. We'll make it work.
Better, so we don't see as much of you. So next on the agenda this evening, site plan review application submitted by 77 Bridge Street, represented by Seaside Legal Solutions, PC, for a proposed three-dwelling unit structure on residential, we should put an A there, on a residential lot to be located at 1313R Hammond Street, assessors map 58, 60, and lots 10 and 20.
Thank you. Once again, for the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, an address of 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. Again, appreciate Mr. Catamatory's, what I believe were kind words, and it's so unique that I'm doing it twice in one meeting. So this is another situation where we have a expansion of a residential property that already has a house on it. In order to comply with the parking requirements of the GZO, we have to build a second, separate driveway, which there is room to do. So again, this, oh my God, the screen is so upsetting tonight. So this shows in red the proposed addition, and there is an existing driveway on the left-hand side of the property, and a proposed driveway on the right-hand side of the property. Units one and two will each have a two-car garage. Unit three will have a one-car garage, and there's also additional driveway space. I think we were, we mapped it out. It was like over 10 cars off the street during a snow emergency, that sort of thing. But again, we have multiple curb cuts, so we need site plan review. We are still in the R10, medium-high district residence, sorry, high-density residential district. We are on a conforming lot. And as you can see, if you can see, as we look at it to the left, as you look at it from the streets to the right, it is this structure. There's a lot of area to the right of that structure, and there's plenty of room for this curb cut to, to go in without interfering with the neighborhood. So once again, we've asked for similar waivers. We provided you composite plans. We've foregone a formal landscaping plan, plan, a formal lighting plan, et cetera. We did, again, make sure that there was drainage, so that that was at least reviewable by the departments. And again, here's the full site plan. Here's the drainage plan. Here are the architectural plans. If you have any questions, we can always flip back. Here's some garage plans, some elevations, showing the structure as expanded in red. And there's the flood map. Again, we're on another hill up and away from the flood plain. GIS data, satellite data. And again, you can see all that open space on this lot. And you can see how, if you look at it, and you didn't know anything about, about zoning or civic planning, you'd look and go, well, the judge of the neighborhood, there's something missing there, and it's the, you know, either the next house or the addition, and that's where we're going to hope to fill in and make it match the rest of the neighborhood and provide some additional housing for the community. That's the existing property. That's it from another angle. So that driveway on the left is the existing driveway that will remain. That's from the rear. And so once again, the standards are the same. We're looking to make sure we use reasonable efforts to conserve and protect natural features. We are in a previously developed parcel. We are definitely removing some grassy area, but there'll be trees in the rear of the lot that are remaining, and it's not going to be a total parking lot. It's going to be within the guidelines allowed by the GZO. We're going to comply with all slope requirements. The buildings and structures, fixtures, and driveways have been cited to make sure that there's healthy circulation and safe circulation among the property. We'll comply with the concrete, sorry, the asphalt requirement for the driveway itself. We exceed the requirements of parking for the GZO, section 4.1. Utilities are already on-site. Again, we gave a drainage plan with an on-site infiltration field. We are not in the MI district. We have tried our best to maximize pedestrian safety and vehicular safety. Again, this is to get cars safely off the road. Right now, there's, one of the, one of the things we heard from the neighborhood during the zoning process is about current on-street parking and potentially currently unsafe on-street parking. And so by putting these driveways and these garages in, we hope to do at least a small part to alleviate some congestion on the roadway out in Hammond Street. And so again, in blue, you've got the existing driveway on the left, which is going to remain. You have the new driveway on the right, which is being installed. The distance between the two is typical of what you find out there between driveways. So again, it's not like we have two driveways where a car is going to turn left into a car turning right. It's our situation. We comply with the zoning ordinance. And where we did not, we received ZBA approval. We're not in the flood plain, and we talked about reasonable circulation. So again, I thank you. Happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, request a vote approving site plan review.
So if we could go back to the front elevation of the proposed project?
Mm-hmm.
Side elevation. Need some elevation. Just trying to look at the garages.
Sure.
Okay. So.
This is, this is a side elevation.
Okay, so that's a part of the new structure.
Yes, and so you'll, you'll kind of come down the new driveway and turn left into these garages.
Okay. Eric, any color for, for your perspective?
You guys sort of have, there is a, a plan that you shared in the packet that it looks really good. I might just call this up so they can kind, you guys sort of understand, like, with the driveway coming in. I just want to show some things.
You tell me which one you want.
Okay, that's, I think that's it. Oh, wait. Oh, because you're screen sharing, I see. I never. There, just because that existing driveway will be extended a little bit, right, to get to that garage?
Yeah, so if you look, you see in the red, the TBR is a little stoop on the existing house that's going to be taken off so the driveway can go further back. You know, but again, that's otherwise there in place now.
And then again, the city, all departments looked at this, it passed muster. You can see there's like this, where it says steep ledge.
I'm sorry. Sorry about that, that was my fault.
Where the steep ledge is, it does, they do have a, like a rainwater sort of catchment area.
Yeah, this is the drainage plan.
And Greg, do you have any comments on this?
Joel, can you just scroll up a little bit on the drainage plan, so I can see the bottom of the page? Sorry about that. So the existing driveway that's kind of in the center of the lot, that's going to be abandoned and sidewalk restored?
Yes, and you see that, I don't know if you've seen the mouse, but right in this area.
It's a little more apparent on the drainage plan than it is on, on the, the previous site plan.
Got it.
Yep.
Any other comments, Greg?
Now, similar, similar sentiment to the, you know, the first application, fairly minimal project. And again, with that condition, build, build according to the plan. That's always, that's always what we want to see. But a, a pretty small project, and I think maybe Joel's made a good case for, you know, allowing additional parking where they believe that there'll be a demand for these units.
Any questions from board members? Hearing none. I'll accept a motion to approve the site plan review for 13 and 13R Hammond Street. We have a motion by Doug Cook.
Second.
Second by Beverly Bookin. We need a roll call vote, please.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member McCarroll?
Yes.
Easy, is it?
I had to go in alphabetical order. I wasn't.
Thank you. Thanks, Joel.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Okay, next under the agenda this evening is a public hearing in accordance with the provisions of Master General 41 and the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Gloucester, Gloucester Planning Board, to consider a, again with the consider, consider, to consider a two-lot definitive subdivision plan filed by 20 Main Street LLC. again with the consider, consider, to consider a two-lot definitive subdivision plan filed by Twenty Main Street LLC entitled Chisholm Court Extension at Twenty Main Street, assessors map ninety-four. And at the request of the applicant, this public hearing's been asked to be continued to the November twenty-first, twenty-twenty-four meeting. I'll just need a motion to accept that. We have a motion by Doug Cook. I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Beverly Bookin. Roll call vote, please.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member McCarroll?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Next under the agenda this evening is major project review. In accordance with GZO five point seven point four, Gloucester Planning Board will review the proposed major project submitted by Twenty Main Street LLC for a twenty-four residential unit mixed-use project to be located at Twenty Main Street, assessors map seven, lot ninety-four. So we do have representation here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Deborah Ellison, Ellison Law Office, sixty-three Middle Street, Gloucester. The applicant is Twenty Main LLC, and Kathy Gatneri is here on behalf of the LLC. The architect is Dan DeLulo. He's here also, as well as the engineers, Hayes Engineering are on the Zoom, Peter Ogrin and Joe Grillo. Tonight, my understanding is that we are to address the third-party review and other comments that were made by the planning board at the site visit. So I'm not certain how the chairman wants to proceed. If you want to have Weston and Sampson briefly present their third-party review, and then we can go into our response or what you think is best.
Let's start with the Weston and Sampson component, and then that sort of naturally flows into your responses.
Okay, thank you very much.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know I'm kind of like the great Oz here. I'm sorry I'm not there this evening. First day of autumn, first cold. With us this evening is Nicole Lewis, James Pearson, and Justin Gould from Weston and Sampson. They are the, the folks that have conducted the various components of the peer review, and I thought it would make sense, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Nicole Lewis to guide how you want to proceed, but just giving the board a little bit of an overview of the peer review. You can be brief on the findings, and we can kind of get into the applicant's response after that.
Terrific, thank you. Nicole, the floor is yours. Can't really hear you, Nicole. Your, your mic, no, mic and camera are working.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Ah, great. Those darn settings. Thank you, guys. I'm Nicole Lewis with Weston and Sampson, as Greg mentioned. We assisted the city in a peer review of the proposed development and issued a memo with comments. The developer, we followed up and discussed, and then they responded to our comments. So we'll just go through each sub-discipline for our, our review and give you a brief overview. So as far as water comments go, with connection to the water mains, our, our comments were mostly reviewed or mostly addressed in the revised plan set that the developer did issue recently. There were a few comments, just very brief, noted to be followed up in the future with the city, such as details that may be, want to be reviewed in construction with Public Works. And I will kick that over then to Justin to address the sewer.
Thank you, Nicole. Justin Gould with Weston and Sampson. The sewer review was pretty straightforward. The, there's twenty-four units, as mentioned. Each one has a, what's called a closet, I believe, but they assumed that that could be used as a second bedroom, rightly so. So the wastewater calculations submitted were for two bedrooms in each unit, so that makes sense, and we approved that in the small commercial space in the front, so all of that was accounted for. We evaluated the sewers in the street. There's actually only a short run of public sewer main before it gets into the large interceptor on Roger Street. Both of those small runs of sewer have available capacity to receive the, the new proposed flows. So there is no issue there that we see. The only minor comment we had was with relation to the sewer service crossing over the, the proposed water main, and that that would have to be concrete encased, and they have acknowledged that and shown that in the revised plan set. Thank you. James?
Just want you to hang on there for a second. I just wanted a quick question. We're on this topic. So the project was proposed as a single bed, or single bedroom units or units. But I, I think it's important that the potential of a two-bedroom unit using the den, you know, with a closet is a part of the calculation, and we, and the, and your calculation still proved out the flow is with unacceptable capacity.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much. Who's up next, Nicole?
James Pearson will speak to the stormwater review.
Yes, good evening. James Pearson with Weston Sampson. So I conducted a review of the stormwater aspect of the project, and with, with the initial submission, probably the, the main thing that I commented on was the, the absence of, of any stormwater BMPs that could be used for peak discharge mitigation, for stormwater quality, and for recharge. There were also just some minor comments about storm brain pipe material, about certain grades to prevent any pounding on the site, and just providing just some more details on, on various things stormwater-related. We since revised a, received a revised submission from the applicant, and we're still evaluating that right now. It appears that with this revised submission, they have added some, some other now stormwater chambers, and, and so we're just kind of evaluating those and also evaluating their calculations to make sure that they that they comply with, with the regulations that we had cited in our initial review.
Terrific.
I'm going to speak also quickly to traffic and constructability. The comments were very minor on the traffic assessment, and they were noted as, the general thought is that they would not affect final design. Constructability, there were minor notes on parking spot sizes. I believe some electric car charging spots were also noted. So there were minor adjustments made to the plans based on the initial comments, and it appears that the comments were addressed.
Thank you, Nicole. Does that take care of your presentation this evening?
Yes, yes, that, those were, that concludes our peer review summary.
Thank you. And again, for the record, this is in our Google Drive. It's a very comprehensive fourteen-page report. And I think the applicant is going to have a, take a minute to address some of the issues that are still needing some attention. And if you, just give me one second, Greg. Did you have a quick comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to also just comment on, you know, what's transpired since the last time this application was in front of the board. One of the things that occurred was also there was fire flow testing to ensure that there was fire flow demand on the site. There, there's a hydrant in fairly close proximity. That, that information has been reviewed by the fire chief, and he, he's confirmed that he's satisfied with fire flows. Most of the things that were peer reviewed are kind of, again, sort of setting the capacity for the project and its interconnection with the utilities. There's clearly additional review that occurs from some perspectives like life, health, and safety, building code requirements, when there's an actual construction documentation that's submitted under a building permit. But most of the review, again, was kind of looking for, you know, those site-related issues and the connection with the city utilities. The other thing that occurred to support the stormwater design, which, which is still under review, as James had mentioned, there was also test pitting done on the site to look at the soils and their ability to accept any potential stormwater. So that's, those were logged and witnessed by the city as well and are incorporated in the design, and that's something we'll still await to hear a, a final conclusion on. But again, overall, you know, the, it was kind of looking at, at the design and ensuring that there are no kind of constructability issues. I know there's been a lot of focus also on the retaining wall. And there was some submission from a, an engineer separate, a structural engineer separate from the design engineer, from Hayes Engineering. And I believe there was also a conclusion on that way the foundation has been designed, there shouldn't be any impact to the retaining wall.
Thank you, Greg. I'd like to turn the floor over to you, Attorney Ellison.
Okay, thank you. Just to give you a little background, as you may recall, the project was sent for third-party review on June twentieth, twenty-twenty-four at this, by this board. Weston and Sampson performed their review, and you've heard from them tonight. It's a little disappointing that there is still the stormwater revisions to be reviewed since we were hoping to have a vote from this board tonight. And I will ask Hayes Engineering to go through their new plans with you with regard to that issue. After we had third-party review letter, there was a meeting between the applicant and the third-party reviewers, as well as the city, went through to answer any questions that we might have and to get the details. After that, last Thursday, the applicant presented their revised engineering and architectural plans and the revised stormwater report, as well as a response to the third-party review and the architectural, architectural changes to the parking layout and the resultant minor changes to the apartment layout. With regard to the traffic study, we're asking for a waiver of the comments and that we not be required to do anything further on that. As you heard from Weston and Sampson, their comments are minor. There is no requirement under MEPA or the local regulations for the traffic study, so we would suggest to you, since Weston and Sampson concluded that there is likely to be any change in the conclusions, that we not be required to do any further work. There were some comments that were made recently by the DPW, which we do not have any issue with, and I'll just briefly describe those. All utility connections must be approved by Public Works Utility Superintendent. We have no issue with that. Excavating into a newly paved road will require the applicant to restore Main Street from curb to curb, and we also have no issue with that. All abandonment of utilities must be done at the main. They included water, sewer, drainage. A note has been added to the plan stating that the existing water service will be abandoned in accordance with DPW requirements. I do not believe there are any other utilities on the site that will be abandoned. And RCP in the public streets for drains, and we again have no issue with that. There were some comments that were made by the planning board at either the site visit or its last meeting that I'd also like to address. There are two street trees or trees on the property that will be removed, and that's because the building, like most buildings on Main Street, is going to be directly on the street and on the sidewalk. The applicant will agree to replace those trees with trees that are within the sidewalk layout, but that will be up to the DPW to approve that, but we're happy to do that. With regard to buffering with landscaping for the directed butter at thirty-three Middle Street, my client and I met with the owners yesterday, and we had the opportunity to view the backyard and to view the, our site from their backyard. The applicant offered to do landscaping on their property to create a buffer between their property and the building. The landscaping would, once it's in place, become theirs. There's no room on the applicant's property to put any sort of landscaping that would actually create a buffer, because it would have to be at the top of the wall. So this would be a resolution that the applicant would suggest. With regard to the vegetation in the rear corner of the property, Mr. DeLulo will address that when he discusses the landscaping plans. I would suggest that all other responses have been addressed, and now I'll turn it over to Peter Ogrin and Joe Grillo, who are on Zoom to go through their revised engineering plans, unless the board has any questions thus far.
Before we let her go, any questions for Attorney Ellison?
I, I have a question. What was on this site before the current use was on there? Was it a, was it an office building or a residential building or something?
Going back historically, there have been many residential buildings on this site that were directly on the street. I don't know exactly when that use stopped and it turned over to what had initially been a bank with a drive-through, and that's what's there now. I don't know the dates of when that changed.
Thank you, Hank. If you want to bring up, so we have Joe Grillo from Hayes and, and I don't see Peter in the. Okay. All right, Peter, the floor is yours. State your name and record, or name and address for the record for me.
We cannot hear you.
You did still. Still can't hear you, Peter. Are you there?
Hi, so I'm Joe Grillo from Hayes Engineering. Can everyone hear me and see my screen?
Uh, yes, sir.
I swear, six oh three Salem Street, Wakefield, Massachusetts. So I believe you just, Deb wanted us to just present the drainage. So this will be a column, and there will be all the roof drainage coming down this column on a pipe. It'll go into these underground chambers here. These will mitigate the peak flow and the volume. We're converting the existing catch basins on site to drain manholes. That'll get rid of a daisy chain, manhole to manhole. At the end of the chain here, we have a water quality unit. It's a Barracuda S three. So that'll help with some of the concerns about water quality. There's a deep sump catch basin here. And then it goes back into the existing street drainage. We have analyzed the one-year storm, which we did not do in the last iteration. This chart summarizes the changes existent to propose flow versus volume. So you can see in all four storm events, there's a decrease in both rate and volume. And with that, I just ask if anyone has any questions.
Any questions from board members on this? I mean, it's sort of hard to see. Greg, do you have any comments on the progress we're making?
Well, I, I think one of the things that was pointed out, as you also saw a similar, well, not a similar, but, but another application for the same locus. One of the things that was missing, you know, prior, the drainage system essentially was a tie-in, and there was really no opportunity for any recharge or any treatment or, or advanced treatment prior to connecting to the city stormwater system. So they have gone back and, you know, and again, based on the explorers from the They have gone back and, you know, and again, based on the explorers from the site. Um, when they did the test pitting, uh, probably about three weeks ago. Um, they've modified the design to uh incorporate what they can based on the site conditions. And I think that's that's kind of the only thing that's really outstanding from um the diff- the different disciplines that were um. Identified in the scope for the peer review to uh basically establish whether or not it complies with the regulations that were cited.
Correct, thank you. Any else in any other comments at this point?
If the board is interested, I could have the architect go through the changes to the parking layout, as well as the minor changes to the apartment building. And then I think that.
It's a story.
Addresses everything.
Yep, okay, that'd be great. Is there a switch on the front?
Does that work?
Yes, we it does now.
Yeah, Dan DeLulo, DeLulo Associates, Melrose, Mass. And um Deb's gonna pull up the latest parking plan and the revisions made to it. There was a comment on the uh. Weston and Sampson review about the maneuverability of the parking and aisle widths. Uh, what we've done is we've revamped the parking layout under the building to have the code required. Uh, aisleways, um, one-way traffic through the garage, anchoring and exiting um off of uh Main Street. Uh, two exterior spaces, uh, two spaces in the in the middle. Up on the, yep, oop, right there that have uh car charging stations. Uh, and the the space, uh, two handicap spaces on the bottom. With a a wider parking space up against the retaining wall on the right-hand side, just to let that car back out a little bit easier. Uh, so with those changes, uh, we're compliant with the zoning requirements for number of spaces, maneuvering, et cetera. Uh, the changes that we had to make to accommodate this was uh by taking our elevator. In our storage room and moving it down towards the front of the building, which uh reduced our retail space from eleven hundred to a thousand square feet. And upon the upper floors, uh, I believe we reduced the area of unit one oh eight. The uh, the uh, fr- front, front on the right-hand side, reduced that area by, I believe, about eighty square feet. And reduce the three floors on the opposite side of the building. Reduced the size of those three units by about eighty square feet each to accommodate moving that elevator down further.
And just as in the moving of the elevator helped us with uh in the basement, of course, but. Just re- repeat about why we moved the elevator and and what they gained.
Yeah, we moved the elevator to allow more aisleway in the garage. Yeah, that was the basic reason for it.
Understood, thank you.
If you want to go to that landscape plan. Okay, in the landscape uh plan that we've we've provided, uh, we've got some buffer area up the right-hand side of the building. Uh, with a, there are tall, narrow, I believe it's a um something, some kind of a pear, I can't. Yeah, silhouette sweet gum tree, which is a very tall uh skinny tree. Uh, we only have seven feet on the front. Yeah, there's the uh, there's the the picture of that tri- type of tree that's there. We've only got seven feet on the front and you can see it widens out in the back to about fifteen feet or so. On the top left is the area that's in question. That's, if you remember the being on the site. That's a fairly steep section of currently, let's call it wooded. And well, our landscape designer saw in there was just vastly overgrown, weedy, needed to be cleaned out. Let's landscape a kind of a look. Also, at the very top of that um hill on the. Yeah, up up on the property line, actually, uh, there's a de- piece of deteriorated um retaining wall. We don't know whether it's ours or the owners or the people in back. We're assuming it's ours and we've said that we would repair that wall. In order for us to repair that wall, quite a bit of, quite a bit of that, quite a bit of that vegetation is gonna have to be removed. So what we're proposing to do is basically clean out that hill. Uh, we've got a retaining wall where we we cut the s- cut the uh the slope back to allow maneuvering space. And if you look at the newer parking plan, those spaces are twenty-five and twenty-six are actually down there in the corner. And twenty-five and twenty-six, where they are shown here, just become maneuvering space for cars. So there is a retaining wall, stepped retaining wall, uh, which cuts off part of that wooded area right now. Uh, which we proposed to plant with the plant shown on that uh on that area. Uh, we also, as discussed with uh the the planning board and with planning and development, and we're out there. Uh, that we will provide a new fence along the top of the retaining wall. Retaining wall, the new, the fence that's up there now, which basically a chain link fence in disrepair. The property line is actually about three feet back from the top of the retaining wall. And what we're proposing is to clean the vegetation off the top of the wall and the face of the wall. Uh, put a new fence along that. Top of the wall and we don't know what kind of fence you would like to talk to the owners about that, whether it's. Chain link or PVC or cedar, whatever fits the bill for those folks. And then provides them some landscaping on their side of that fence, because it would be impossible for us to maintain landscaping on our side of the fence. So I think that's where we are with the with the landscaping and the parking at this stage.
So just to clarify, parking spaces twenty-four and twenty-five have moved down. Um, or opposite their location?
Yeah, right.
I see it there. It's a better representation. So that makes better sense for the the exiting of the parking garage uh on the outbound, right? So you don't have a conflict with that parking area.
Correct.
Yep. And how tall is this retaining wall that we're talking about?
I I think where it turns the, where it turns, comes out and turns the corner. I I believe it's about five feet high at that point.
This makes notice the new retaining wall, doesn't specify height. Terrific. Questions from board members, gentlemen from the state? Greg, do you have any comments at this period?
Uh, nothing on the changes, other than I think it's a much more functional parking area. Um, there definitely were some areas that was a little tight. Um, so this this meets the uh the aisle requirements of the zoning ordinance for one-way circulation. And I think it's it it accommodates the the circulation better on the outbound, as you just had mentioned.
Attorney Ellison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have anything else. Um, I believe we've addressed and Weston and Sampson has agreed that. Everything has been addressed, other than what they're continuing to review. I don't know whether there's any way to proceed with that still being under review, I guess I would ask. Because as I said, we were hoping to get a vote tonight. I don't know whether there is a way to do that.
I think at this point, we're still doing our diligence. Um, and, you know, with the. Obviously, a lot of the information that came out of peer review, um, the issues have been addressed, but I think we'll take a breath and. I'll accept a motion to um. Okay, I'm sorry, Sean, I didn't see you hiding out there. Go ahead, Sean.
No problem. Uh, just a quick question, if we could go back to the uh landscaping plan? Yep, so uh previously, when we had done the site visit, there was discussion where it's now noted weed mat with stone. I believe there was some discussion on the site visit and at prior meetings. Whether that was gonna be a concrete slab walkway back there, uh, and now it's the weed mat with stone. Is that the the final plan now? Uh, so there's no, no concrete slab between the edge of the building and the retaining wall?
Uh, no, there's no concrete slab back there. We we want to leave it weed mat with stone. Uh, just to provide drainage in that area where the water comes off the face of that wall. Uh, we'll let it uh seep into the ground rather than have it runoff into the garage and into the systems.
All right, and I think also that there had been some discussion along the way about some um, a series of steps leading up to the the. Area in the upper right, um, the vegetated area, um, and it looks like that's out of the picture now as well, right? So there's no, no steps going up to to that area.
No, there are no steps there. And uh, just wanted to bring up the fact that 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 um. Matt with s- with stone area actually catches that that area right there that's just being highlighted. Uh, that's about, I'm gonna say fifteen feet higher than the parking lot. Cause that retaining wall comes out and jogs around that area. Uh, so it's it's a, it's noth- nothing that we would ever be able to maintain. So we're just gonna cover it, stone it and let it drain the way it basically has been draining for many years.
Okay, thanks.
Take care of you, Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have a little bit more work to do. Um, and what I'd like to have is a motion to continue this um major project review to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is uh October seventeenth of twenty twenty-four. We have a motion. I need a second, please.
Second, point of order, do we have an open hearing here?
This is a major project review. It's not a hearing.
I gotcha. Okay, sorry, I thought.
Yep.
So second.
Yep. Um, so we have a motion by Doug Cook, second by Beverly Bookin. I need a roll call vote, please.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Uh, member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member McCarroll?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, guys.
So when we noticed the meeting, um, we thought we had minutes, but we actually, they weren't completed yet. So we'll have to um move that on to the next meeting, the minutes of the nineteenth.
Greg, do you have anything that's not reasonably anticipated?
The only thing, um, one of the things that in advance of the technical working sessions associated with the um comprehensive plan. Um, timing-wise, I wasn't sure if we were able to make this agenda with a brief presentation from uh Laura Sneed, who we've been working with. She was at your uh meeting in late August. And I'm wondering if board members are available for a a fully remote meeting um next Thursday. Around the same start time of five o'clock.
Make that work. You get extra credit, right?
Extra credit, extra pay.
Fully removed, okay. Lee, how are you on that Thursday?
The tenth?
The tenth, yes, sorry.
Sean, you gonna be any place fun?
Just gonna delay my drinking at the Harbor Light fundraiser, but uh I'll I'll make it promote from my car over there.
I will be missing the meeting on the seventeenth, though, which is the following Thursday, which is a regular meeting.
Yes.
And is that when we're voting on?
Well, we'll re- we'll revisit the major project review and see how far they get with their.
Okay.
Application. Okay, so no minutes, everything's been anticipated. Hank?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll move, there being no further business, I'll move that we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn by Hank McCarroll. I need a second, please. Thank you, Mr. Cook. We need a roll call vote.
Chairman Noonan?
Yes.
Member Bookin?
Yes.
Member Cook?
Yes.
Member Henry?
Yes.
And member McCarroll?
Yes.
Get well soon, Greg.
Thank you.